Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Microsoft Teams pursuant to Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that the board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. It is 6:32 PM. First order of business is going to be organization of the board. Would somebody like to nominate each here?
I would. Chris?
I hear first.
I sec- I second that one.
Would you accept a nomination, please?
I would accept a nomination.
Thank you.
All right, we take to a vote.
Discussion.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, I have a lot to say about it, but I can't say it here.
Okay, then a vote.
Strike your eye.
Homens eye.
Russel eye.
Excellent.
You're ahead of us.
Chris is the chair.
Congrats.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve you and the town. And although I don't necessarily want to do this for the rest of my life, I'm happy to do it for another year. Also, on the same vein, I am also now the chair of the Montechuset Regional Planning Commission officially.
Cool.
Congratulations.
We're getting a little more juice on a regional level.
That's excellent.
Well, we'll see what it means because that and $5 won't even buy you a coffee at Starbucks anymore, so.
Oh, no.
Either way, on to, on to, well, before we do that, we have another organization item, which is we need to appoint a clerk. And I would like to suggest that somebody make a nomination for Ian as clerk.
Uh, some moves?
I'll second that.
And for discussion, would you accept the nomination be clerk of the planning board?
I do.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'm calling a vote.
Strike your eye.
Homens eye.
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
What does that beep?
It's an alarm. I don't know how to turn it off.
I have it somewhere in my phone.
I know the code, but it's since we moved this.
Yeah. Either way, so I think tonight will be a relatively efficient meeting. I know that sometimes it jinxed to say that out loud.
Yeah, don't do that.
But we do have some important things to kick off. So first on the list is, is there anybody for the public here to comment on anything that is not on the agenda, either in person or online? Seeing none, we're going to move forward. We're going to move into acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. Now, the minutes for the meeting have been provided to all the members of the board through the drive, but have also been made available to everybody through the packet that's been prepared for the meeting tonight. With that said, I'd like to handle these our usual way, which is to, to receive a motion and a vote, and then handle any amendments and discussion through friendly amendment.
I'll make the motion that we accept the May 22nd, 2025 planning board meeting amendments as they are presented in the packet.
I'll make a second.
And here in the first and the second, let's handle corrections through discussion. It wasn't that long ago, but it feels like an absolute lifetime because between town meeting and the following day after, like.
Yeah.
Any corrections or adjustments?
I don't see any.
All right, so hearing no further discussion of corrections, calling a vote.
Strike your eye.
Homens eye.
Carpenter, aye.
And the chair is aye. The minutes are accepted. And returning to the agenda, because I would be remiss not go here, let's, it doesn't fit perfectly under an item, but we have a new member of the board courtesy of the most recent election.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter, would you like to introduce yourself and say a few things to the board and the public? About yourself?
About me?
And perhaps maybe his planning board experience in other communities?
Well, my experience, uh, my working experience was in pharmaceutical development. And I spent several years in school in analytical chemistry was my graduate degree. And then I went to law school nights. My wife sort of got tired of me complaining about wanting to do it. So she said, you go do it. So I did. And I finished that in 95. I graduated and passed the bar. And for many years in pharmaceutical companies, I did patent and trademark law and licensing. So that's it in a nutshell. Lived in, own in Hubbard City for better part of 10 years now. Really enjoy the rural character and hope to preserve that while still trying to find the right balance with appropriate growth in town, so that our tax base can be broadened. Okay, that's about it.
And I do have a vague relation. Perhaps you were on the planning board in other communities?
Yeah, I did. Well, it was almost irrelevant because it was eons ago. 32 years ago, I was on the planning board in Tinswell, Memphis. And, well, it was, it was pertinent in that we went through a master plan process, which I guess is ongoing now still, right?
I'm still trying to develop.
Yeah.
It's a very contentious process and there are a lot of voices. Yep, you have to be very accommodating sometimes to different persons.
I believe that, I believe your insights, even though it is a few years ago, that are going to be much in good use, for the good use.
It'll come back quick.
Absolutely. There, there certainly have been some big changes at a state regulatory level that, through a lot of discussion with Alec tonight on the town meeting articles, is going to start certainly introducing him to some of the stuff that has, I mean, and a lot of it's been over the last three or four years, never mind decades. Been a lot of erosion of the home rule. But yeah, I think I speak on behalf of the whole board. We're pretty happy to have you here, but I mean, it is, it's an elected position, but ultimately it's a volunteer position. And we all know that this can sometimes be a fairly challenging unpaid job, especially when you look at the regional stuff. But we're very happy to have you here and looking happy to have you as part of the team serving the community.
Thank you.
So returning to the agenda, we have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. And once I kick it off, I'm going to turn it over to Alec. So I'm calling to a border, the Hubbard City Planning Board Public Hearing pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 5, July 2nd at 6:30 PM in the Slate Building, 7 Main Street. We're considering the adoption of site plan review rules and regulations. And just for the public, as matter of background on it, this is the second part of what happened at town meeting. So at the town meeting, we had passed an article to move some of our site plan rules into an administrative rule since we've begun adopting administrative rules as a town. Because there's some, some places where the flexibility just makes sense. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Alec.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. Can everyone in the room hear me well?
Yep, sound good.
Fantastic. All right, bear with you. I like my screen share running. All right. Thank you, everybody, for those watching at home and those in the room. As Chris mentioned, this is a continuation of an item that was first taken up on town meeting floor, but we're going to step through the process, talk through the, the length of work this board and myself have done to date to get to this point. And we're going to talk about why we're here and the intent of this public hearing. So unlike many public hearings, which are based on an application, this public hearing is specifically to consider the way in which this board will consider application types in the future, specifically site plan approval. We'll go over that as a perfect type as well as some other topics tonight. Bear with me. Computer's a little jumpy. So site plan approval is amended by which we evaluate projects, proposals, and predominantly new construction and major renovations on a large scale. Site plan review is considered a by right process, and it's that hybrid of between a building permit and a special permit. So while the board does not have discretion on the use type, it does have the responsibility and the discretion to, in reviewing the layout, the structures, and the setup of a site. This is a way by which the town provides added protection for those uses that it feels are pertinent to the community, should be allowed in the community, but may need additional supervision at the initial construction phase to ensure their impact to the neighboring areas are limited. I can't stress enough, it's not a discretionary process, but an extra checks and balances by which this board considers the applications and proposals for public health and safety. So predominantly, towns employ site plan review as a more expedited process, unlike special permits, which are seen as being concerning, cumbersome, and nerve wracking for developers and business owners, where they don't know for certain they will get an approval. A developer or an applicant can approach the site plan review process with a greater deal of comfortability. Additionally, as I, as I emphasized on the last slide, it's a way in which this board and planning boards across the Commonwealth ensure that the proposed site will not have negative impacts or that those negative impacts are being addressed or reduced. Commonly, we hear about noise, traffic, circulation, pollution. Those are things that are often addressed in the site plan review process. Now, site plan review up until now has been codified in the town Hubbard City specifically through the zoning bylaw. And while the state does not regulate site plan review, unlike special permit, which has its entire sections of master ever law, site plan review is really left to the administration of a municipality. And by that regard, many towns started by placing site plan review in their zoning bylaw, including all the administrative bits and pieces. But ultimately, many communities have shifted away from that model of business and instead have gone for a more expedited and streamlined methodology, specifically through the adoption of rules and regulations. In our case, we've put forward draft site plan review rules and regulations. Now, what does a rules and regulations document typically entail? Unlike administrative rule one of the board or administrative rules and regulations in other communities, it doesn't dictate the proceedings and what the meeting entails, but it instead, it dictates and entails what the applicant should put forward to the board, the criteria by which it will be evaluated, the process by which you submit, and the simple procedure of how the application goes from application to public hearing to decision, and if needed, the appeal of that decision making process. You'll note that if you attended annual town meeting or you've reviewed the warrant article that was put forward, there are still some remaining components of site plan review in the zoning bylaw. Those are the necessary pieces to ensure it's enforceable and it's tied directly to your zoning. However, the rules and regulations that we're going to talk through, the board has in front of them, are a method by which we evaluate this process in a more expedited and streamlined form. Additionally, a key element here is it gives the board greater flexibility when evaluating a site plan review. So while site plan review, as I've said, is a by right process, your zoning bylaw is a very rigid document. Now, site plan review allows you the opportunity to review from a public health and safety standpoint, but does not allow you to evaluate the use type here. The zoning bylaw predominantly enforces uses and dimensional regulations. Those remain untouched through the site plan review process. Those are non-negotiables. However, boards may want to consider on a case by case basis, for example, the density of foliage surrounding a site, the way in which parking is handled on site or circulated, and those are things that are truly handled on a case by case basis. So they give the board a greater ability to consider waivers from the criteria that are not pertinent to any proposal in front of them. Additionally, and everyone in the room can appreciate this, when you go to town meeting, we often have at the back of the warrant, all those little articles that might seem administrative, they might not seem like the most important thing we're there for, but ultimately, they're a part of the process. They're something you have to go through. The rules and regulations through this public hearing process we're at tonight are ultimately, can be revised through a public hearing process. That's something that could be done much more efficiently, much more easily. Many towns do it on a one or two year basis just to update their rules and regulations, ensure that they're staying up to date with the most important trends and responding to patterns that come across through various applications. And it saves you a few extra minutes on town meeting. By the time you're at the end of the night, you don't want to be doing these administrative bits, and this process will allow the board to address those independently without having to borrow time from town meeting floor. So to review briefly, this is, at this point, the fourth meeting by which the board has taken up this discussion in a robust manner. Through January and February, the board received education and examples of rules and regulations documents, specifically reviewing a handbook that had been put forward by Mark Mabrowski, an expert in the field of Massachusetts zoning law. In between April and May, the board has presented its draft regulations and did hearings on the zoning bylaw revisions, which ultimately went to annual town meeting. And in June, those were successfully approved. And we are now at the July end of this process where we will now adopt the rules and regulations. Those materials have been sent off to the attorney generals, specifically the zoning bylaw, for their review approval, but that is more of a cursory review just to ensure that it is compliant with the law. I feel confident saying that it is in fact compliant, and I am recommending tonight the board adopt its rules and regulations so that you can start enforcing your new process. When the board's ready, I do have a motion provided for you, but I will pause here. The board has had two separate occasions now to review the draft rules and regulations document. I'm going to open it up separately for myself, take down my screen share, and we can talk through those as you blink.
All right. Thank you, Alec. So from a, from a process standpoint, would anybody like to waive the reading of the entire proposed rule into the record?
I'll make the motion.
Does anybody object to reading the entire proposed rule?
No.
So going from there, I have a couple of questions that I'm sure other folks on the board share, so I'm going to kick off the discussion. So under definitions and acronyms, is that to be generated by the board? Do you have any recommendations on those at this point? Or what are your thoughts on how we should handle that section?
Bear with me. My apologies, everybody. I'm having to sign back into my, my SharePoint, so I'm actually having trouble getting over that. Ian, would you want to just forward me a link to tonight's packet?
Yes.
No problem. Well, while you're grabbing that, the, the other question, and this is mostly just a clarification for the benefit of the public, is how Section 6, which is Use and Development Regulations, which closes with the sentence, the board may not approve an application that fails to comply with the zoning bylaws, with, with Section 10 regarding waivers? And can you just clarify for the benefit of the public, the, the difference between those two sections? Specifically clarifying where the authority to, to override for an application that fails to comply with applicable zoning law lies?
All right. I load it up into my section if you wouldn't mind just once again pointing to the specific section you're referring.
Yep, so the first one, Section 2, definitions and acronyms that, that chose as to be generated with the board?
Yep.
What's your recommendation on that section?
At this stage, the board may best succeed to assist him. We should preserve this section for future use. In your current document, we refrain from using acronyms. We do our best to clearly and plainly spell things out. As you develop this document over time and as you administer it, particularly in the first year, we best pay attention to definitions and acronyms that need to be called out. But where you're doing state one of the document, the intent is for it to be as plain and clear as possible, where we've avoided acronyms, you could simply state to be reserved for future use.
All right, so I guess to keep us moving efficiently on that, does anybody on the board object to amending that section to instead re-reserve for future use?
I would agree with that. Sounds good.
Thank you. And then Alec, going back to the question that, that had a whole lot of words in it, and I hope you're just tracking where I'm trying to go with it while I inartfully ask it. Section 10 and Section 6, if looked at by somebody who doesn't spend a lot of time doing this, might look like they interfere with each other because Section 6 talks about specific uses and the board not having the authority to approve an application that fails to comply with the underlying zoning bylaws. Can you talk a little bit about how that, Section 6, works with Section 10, which is the section on waivers? And, and just what the board can waive and what it can't waive, just as a general matter for the benefit of the public?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So Section 10 is meant to give you the ability to waive requirements of your site plan reviews, rules, and regulations. Section 6, which applies or refers directly back to your zoning bylaw. Now, I'll note your zoning bylaw remains the superseding document. You, as a board, cannot waive elements of the zoning bylaw. It's very rare if you need that, that can be done. We're familiar with certain permitting types like Chapter 40b at a state level. There are even terms like use variances that some towns chose to adopt. However, the Hubbard City zoning bylaw specifically prohibits use variances. And so in Section 6, you discuss the ability to comply or the requirements to comply with Article 4 use regulations and Article 5 development regulations. So that includes your dimensional regulations, the uses that are allowed in specific districts. Someone would not be able to apply Provision 10, the waivers, against Section 6 because ultimately your zoning bylaw supersedes it and your zoning bylaw does not allow you to consider a use variance.
Is it possible for you to provide us a very specific kind of like a, an example that kind of provides a way to visualize this better? Because I'm still myself confused about how a waiver would come into play.
So, so I, I believe I can add an example to here because we did have one that came in front of the board specifically related to the Vertex Tower. Because there was a parcel that needed to be used as a driveway, was part of the project, but that was not actually zoned for that use.
Correct.
By, by the town for use as a telecommunication property. Now, that one went a different way because there was federal law that overrode it. But the planning board didn't actually have the authority to override on a regular basis. The planning board would not have had the authority to override the usage.
Resoning.
Yeah, in order to be able to allow access off the driveway.
Okay.
Now, that one went differently because of the, the Federal Level Telephone Communications Act, said we had no authority to not do it. So it's one of those things where there's, where to Alec's point, there's exceptions.
Right. And that would have been a good example had such federal laws not been in place.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
In the example you just cited, let's stipulate that the federal law didn't apply. What would have been the remedy in that case for access?
So the remedy in that case would have been they would have had to appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
And then they would have followed the criteria, which is, you need, Alec could probably shout it off the top of his head, but unique characteristics of the land or so and so forth.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, your dilemma, I just wonder if it would clarify the concern by just adding word subject to the limitation of Section 6, just to make sure that it closes the loop there and, you know, have a concern that you're overriding the zoning requirement. Is that your concern? Do I misunderstand?
Well, so part of my reason for bringing this up is I ultimately know where we're trying to go with this, and there is a somewhat nuanced analysis that goes into this. And a member of the public just looking at the waiver section might be like, oh, well, the planning board can just do a waiver. So perhaps adding clarifying language to, to that point, which is, yeah, add a clarifying language to number 10, just on what a waiver can be and what it can't be. I think, I think it would be helpful to us in the long term because we certainly haven't come up for discussion. I don't know if you have any best practices or template language for doing that?
Bear with me. I'm just kind of thinking through a way that we can address it in the most simple terms. I think a simple statement along the lines of what was proposed, something to the effect that waivers cannot be granted to Section 6 of this document or the provisions listed within the zoning bylaw, should cover you pretty, pretty simply. I think that'll give you a little bit more context to it, but ultimately, the enforceability of your zoning bylaws will hold true regardless.
Both words about that.
I'm looking at the second sentence, and that's the one that really is the more confusing one. I'm wondering if it can be, either clarify the writing, the way it's written. What is confusing to me is where it says, it can only be granted if the board finds that the requirement provides no pertinent information to the proposal, right? So for me, that's, again, I'm trying to find an example there and then work it backwards and see if the wording can be made clearer so that a layperson can truly understand where a waiver comes in.
So the way I read and interpret this is the waivers only apply to requirements that are specifically established by this regulation, so.
So 20 sections within this regulation is what you're saying?
Yeah, to the sections within the regulation. So an example would be like, and let's just come up with a hypothetical here. So like, an underfunded nonprofit comes in and is like, is there any chance you can waive the required fee established by the board under 4C? Well, we could go, yes, under Section 10, we can waive or modify requirements listed herein.
Okay.
By a written request of the applicant, under our discretion. If the board finds the requirement, it provides no pertinent information of the proposal. So that would be a check, check.
So this is the proposal within the rules and regulations?
Yeah, the proposal of the site plan application.
And I think if we clarified with those words that says it's, the proposal's within this, within the site plan rules and regulations. Adding those words would make it clear that what, what the intention here is. And it's not a blanket waiver to anything that an applicant can come in and say, oh, I don't, I don't agree with this. It really has to be in regards to the, it has to be in regards to the site plan rules and regulations, where we have discretion because these are.
I mean, that could be as simple as just, God, and this is turning into lawyers.
Yeah.
Real fast. But maybe instead of herein, just saying what we mean, which is, instead of herein it is, these rules and regulations are cycling.
I mean, the document is entitled Rules and Regulations.
Yeah.
Right, right. So this is not, I think, I hear what you're saying, Francois.
Okay.
I don't know if that's being redundant. I don't know if that's being redundant, if the document itself is pertinent to the rules and regulations itself. To say it again, it would probably clarify, but it, I don't know that it's necessary. But I don't object to it.
Okay. I guess the only reason that I would insert this here is just because some individuals might look at this here as a loophole. And, and maybe it's clear to the members of the board, but I think we need to be able to point to the exact wording as to why this is not a loophole. But rather, this only applies to items that are very specific to these rules and regulations.
Alec, would, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I think, um, Mr. Chairperson, I think you put forward a fairly reasonable approach to kind of clarifying that this is explicit to the rules and regulations. If you simply rephrase the first sentence up to, uh, the comma, you could write, the board may waive or modify the requirements listed in these rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Then that just clearly says, it's just this document we're talking about. We're not talking about any other document. We're not talking about the zoning bylaw. You don't have to waste the time of going to get a legal opinion to affirm yourself, um, but clarifying it's only these, these application materials.
Thank you. I think that would be very, that's, that's a reasonable way of doing it. And again, I'm not trying to split hairs here. It's more like, we do have fairly large pockets of, I mean, we have a population that can potentially leverage this here. And it really has to be clear as to why maybe a waiver fits or does not fit. And we have to make sure that they don't feel like we're not granting a waiver just because we don't want to. It's, it's really, it's, it is written very clearly here. Thank you.
So, um, does anybody on the board object to making the change that Alec proposed?
No, no.
All right. So any other questions or comments from the board on these?
Oh, well written, and thank you very much for doing this here.
Yes, thank you.
Are we ready to make a decision on these tonight?
Yes.
All right, so, um. Well, before we do that, is there any member of the public here to provide public comment on the adoption of the rules and regulations for site plan? In person or online?
Can I correct the spelling of amendment to section four? That's a big, big deal. That's my contribution.
I would. All right, so. With that, with that also added to the list of, uh, discussion items on the floor, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
A second motion.
Here to first and a second, call and vote.
Shout your eye, moment's right.
Carpenter, your eye.
All right, and the public hearing is closed on that. And, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the rules and regulations for site plan approval with the amendments as discussed in the meeting tonight?
Some move.
Here to first and a second, any additional discussion? Call and vote.
Shout your eye, moment's right.
Carpenter, your eye.
And the chair is eye. The, um, the rules are accepted. Uh, and just for, um, just for a point on this, um, Alec, should we refer to this as administrative rule number two?
I think that's perfectly acceptable. Um, to give the, the board some clarity of what happens next, um, I will make a couple minor adjustments to the formatting, just so that everything fits nice and pretty. Um, at that point, we'll also insert a signature line of your town clerk. Uh, the document will not become official until it is placed on file with the town clerk's office, which we can take care of tomorrow.
Uh, we are not open tomorrow, so Monday.
Monday.
Excellent, well, thank you. So, um, we're going to come back to Alec, uh, in just a moment. Actually, probably bring Alec in on this discussion. So next up on the agenda is one fifty-five Williamsville Road. So come on up to the table, man, and let us know what you're thinking and, uh.
That's us, the one fifty-five.
Let your little.
Hello, uh, my name is Rebecca Fenneples.
No, please, no, no, see.
Oh, thank you.
We're not official.
Not the Spanish Inquisition.
Uh, resident of.
I bite, I bite.
That's okay, I can use the horses.
Oh, that's true.
Uh, so I'm a resident of one fifty-five Williamsville Road, and I'm making a motion to change the zoning, um, to put a commercial horse blanket washing and repair business in. Currently, it's in Gardner, um, down, uh, Baker Street, so not too far from the police station. Uh, looking to move to expand, hopefully, um, but I have this all written out. Everybody, everyone would like to look at the kind of overview that I got going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and have you had, um, have you had the chance to meet with Alec yet?
No, um, I just sent him recently the, uh, the zoning request, and that's been it so far until today.
So, there's, there's a few things to look at and talk about here, and, um, uh, I'm sure you just heard the conversation that we just had about the board's ability to grant waivers.
Yep.
So, um, the first one is. I know at one point you talked to the building commissioner.
Yeah, about two years ago.
Yeah, we're also in a slightly different place as a town now, because we have an actual, a professional town planner. So, thinking about this from a procedural standpoint, it might be worth taking the time for you to meet with, um, with Alec, not necessarily in a public meeting. Have a good, careful look at the use table and see how Alec interprets it, uh, in line with what you want to do, because, um. While ultimately the building commissioner is the person who says whether or not they think use fits into the existing structure, um, he would make that decision, uh, working in concert with a professional town planner. So it's a little bit different than how we were before, when it was just an all volunteer board and those local commissioners. It's a little bit of an evolution. And part of the town planner's job is to help, uh, package stuff up to put it, uh, in front of the board in a way where we can do something on it. So, if, if you fell within one of those article four uses, be it, uh, under some of the changes that have gone on related to agricultural accessory uses in the last year or two, um, that could potentially make it so you wouldn't actually need a change to the zoning. And the planning board itself doesn't have the authority to issue a waiver, isn't the existing use zoning. The ZBA can, but they do that after you fail the determination from the building commissioner.
Okay.
So, that's how that would go from a amending the zoning, or rather, that's how that would go from a variance standpoint. Now, from a, a rules and regulations standpoint, we are currently looking at amending our commercial zoning. There's actually a grant that we have, um, and Alec, you can talk a little bit about the status of this grant. Where, we're currently doing an assessment of the areas of the town that are zoned commercially.
Yep.
In order to make recommendations on where that should go. Because one of the consistent narratives of the planning board is, oh, the map's gone. But there used to be a map right there that looked like a little sick hurricane on a yellow.
Yeah, I remember. It was mostly the main roads, mostly sixty-eight that has commercial, yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're well in the residential area down towards Berry, so.
Not only that, but if I make a very useful remark, you're also in the scenic road.
In the, sorry?
Uh, Williamsville Road, if I understand, is also scenic road.
Oh, is it?
It is, yeah.
Oh, I don't think I knew that. Well, we're also well off the road. You can't even really see the house.
But, but the property is on Williamsville Road, and that is by, uh, the way I understand it, it is a scenic road.
Okay.
So just something to keep in mind.
Good to know, yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
So, that, that project is currently ongoing, and in terms of what it takes to actually change the zoning, there's a few avenues of doing it. If you're talking about changing the zoning, not for you, changing the overall zoning, that can either happen by the planning board, um, on its own motion, coming up with a change for the bylaw, like we're currently doing with the revision, trying to figure out what we, the current planning board thinks our commercial zoning should look like while we're in the town. Or the select board can tell us to take it up as a motion, or, uh, somebody can do a citizen's petition, essentially put it on a town meeting, which is not usually a pretty successful way to go for things related to zoning, because it's hard to do it in a way that's legally compliant without having your lawyer write it all for you. So, uh, I'm obviously going to have Alec chime in on this, but that is, that's roughly how I look at it for what the avenues currently are. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go into too much of a public debate on some of the items you're talking about here until the meeting with Alec happens.
Sure.
And you know which pathway you're going to go.
Yep.
So I, I think that's in your interest and the town's interest. So, Alec, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairperson, so, um, I, I initially referred, um, I initially preferred your, or referred your presenter tonight, uh, to come before the board, uh, because I wanted to have this conversation with you before I start assigning time and resources to it. Um, as everyone in the room is aware, I'm assigned up to ten hours per week, but I do think there is a lot of traction here. Um, to give the board some context, uh, for me as a planner, when I'm evaluating a potential district change, which, without having an opinion from the zoning enforcement officer in front of me, I can't say for certain, but speculatively, I do think the zoning change would be required here to allow such a use. But whenever we consider, um, an activity like that, I have a variety of tests that I like to apply. Uh, now, those tests are things that can be applied by people, not just my, a couple, but experts in the field, which in this case, your proponent happens to be an expert in exactly this use type and similar use types, it sounds like. So, um, this was, this would fall to what we call agrotourism, ecotourism as a use type. And even looking at your existing business district, I don't think it's too strongly addressed in the business district. I think this is potentially an alternative district, something more like an agricultural, uh, economic district or agricultural business district. But something that between myself and the proponent here, we can certainly do some investigation. With the board's authorization, I would like to work with the proponent, um, to request some water consumption, wastewater records, those kinds of things in my investigation of the use type in particular, which would really be fun to do some research, learn about a new business that I wasn't familiar with. Um, you know, water and wastewater typically are, uh, some of the biggest generators here that draw consideration. Additionally, the things that I found in my research are, uh, pollution, noise, and odor. Whether they're reasonable concerns, they tend to be the public concerns when considering this use type and similar use types. Um, but, uh, we could set forth to prepare some records using their existing businesses as a bit of a test case. Um, we could get that opinion of zoning from the building commissioner to provide exact reference and guidance as to what would need to be done. Uh, and then we could set out to do some polling of the neighbors, investigation of the proposed district, um, and consideration of other sources like dimensional regulations. Of course, there would be some milestones in the middle. We'd make some initial presentation to the board, our findings thus far. Uh, and we would have as a stopgap at any time, the ability to, to unauthorize me to continue working or investigating on the project. But as I said, I, I do think there's some traction here, and for a community like ours, that I think there's some further investigation that can be done.
Sounds exciting.
All right, so as additional context on this, so there was an effort, um, to do a agricultural accessory use ecotourism bylaw, um, that has essentially been going on off and on for the last five years, uh, that failed at a public hearing the last time it came up. I have been informed by the chairs of a couple other committees that they are interested in representing that, um, in some format. And I think that that also works with what is going on here, because the last iteration of that, if it was to go forward, would have called this accessory use as long as the primary use of the property was equivalent in nature. So there may be a little bit of an opportunity there. The other context I think that is important is that, um, last year, we put together a goals list for the planning board and did a prioritized matrix. And doing that or this kind of bylaw change came up as a tier-two goal. And we've knocked off four are in process on all of the tier-one goals, to the best of my recollection. So, uh, you wouldn't know if, it wouldn't be an unreasonable use of, of resources to get this kept off.
All right.
I don't have any, uh, concerns about the long-term goal, but for the applicant here, I'm just thinking your time. And, and the most expedited process would be a request for a variance, right?
Yep.
You're, you're gonna have.
So maybe we shouldn't consider one or the other, or both, as an alternative.
So.
I mean, the neighbors are the ones you're concerned about. How would they feel about this?
Well, ju- just as a point of order here, only one of these things is actually up for us to consider. So we can only really consider the idea of the overall zoning change. It's ultimately up to the applicant to figure out if you want to, uh, work with Alec and push on the ZEO in order to get the, um, if you get a denial, or if you don't, um, if you get a denial, then potentially taking it to the ZBA.
Okay.
So that decision's up for me to make. There's not really a lot that we can do on this tonight, other than say, yeah, we support as a board and bring on to our tier-two goal, which is essentially a bylaw revision that we wanted to do anyways.
Okay, great, appreciate it.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
This is that you currently have in Gardner?
Yep.
That is, it's still viable for you to remain in Gardner, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I've had the business for three years.
Okay.
It's going well, growing all the time.
So it's not, it's not like you are losing a lease or anything of that nature at this point in time?
Nope.
All right.
Nope, I just like to bring it home, have it cozy.
Oh, very reasonable, yeah.
Bring a business into Gar- uh, in, from Gardner to Hubbardson. Um, we also had, uh, was it hu- um, hygienic, hygienic blanket company?
That's right.
From the nineteen, what, nineteen oh three or something that was here at Hubbardson that burned down a long time ago. But kind of cool to bring a, a similar business back to town, I thought.
Out of curiosity, and this is just for my personal point of information, is this, is this, uh, is this enterprise one where you are the only person who works on this here, or do you?
Just me, yep, owner-operator.
Okay, and you don't expect to have, uh, employees?
I would like to expand, yeah. Part of the reason I'd like to bring it to Hubbardson is so that I can have more room to grow, um, you know, not exponentially, not much more than the space that is required, but yes, I'd like to have employees at some point.
Good, it's good to know.
Yep.
This is one of the things that we as an entity also would like to see is this employment opportunities for people here.
I need people to help me prepare the blankets, which is, you know, a lot of sewing and labor, things like that, so.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
So, any other questions you have for us? You've got answered what?
No, I, I'm just glad to kind of get the ball rolling, so I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Next step is to be with Alec.
Yep. Yeah, Alec, and, uh, based upon your conversation there, you're going to need to make a decision on whether or not you're going to go get a formal opinion from the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, good. So should we set up a, can we set up a, an appointment with him? Is that how we do this, or?
Yep.
Yeah, just email.
Yep, so, uh, typically I make myself available on, uh, Fridays for virtual appointments, but we can also do Monday through Thursday, based on, um, your availability. Uh, what I'd say is shoot me an email, uh, tomorrow morning, and we can work out the next available appointment. I would be interested in seeing the, the zoning opinion, so why don't we time it out based on when you receive that?
Okay, sounds great, yeah. Pick a day and a time, I'll be there.
I'm looking forward to working with you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
We have his email, of course.
I do, yeah.
I have it, great.
We hope, oh, fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, it sounds exciting. Well, thanks for coming.
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for having us. Thank you, appreciate it.
That works out for you.
Thank you.
Do we have any items on our own business?
Are those your glasses there?
Uh, no, I don't know whose those are, glasses.
I have those too. You got them on a tip.
You're, you're all set, I don't know.
All right, I'm going to have your glasses, I'll have to work on them afterwards. All right, I'll have your glasses, I'll have to work on them afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, goodnight.
Have a good night.
All right, so moving into administrative matters, we have a few items here where, I believe we got some updates from Alec.
Okay, um, I will, to confirm my first report, there's a few different things under administrative matters, if you just want me to run through A through...
Yes, please.
Well, A, really, MRPC project updates?
Yep.
Okay, so continuing to work with MRPC specifically on the revisions to your business district, after a previous meeting, a step forth said Tracy Murphy had been assigned to the project. Tracy is working on a survey exercise that'll be administered across a variety of participants, both business owners as well as consumers and residents. I and myself have been working hard and prepared at this stage to begin rolling out interviews with specifically business owners. So, I'm gonna be working to get a sense of your business community, effectively conducting a business inventory of those businesses within the existing commercial district. We're gonna be considering their, their future plans for expansion, their intent for their property, their previous permanent processes and what they've experienced in their time in Hubbardston, but additionally, attempting, in their words, to define and understand their consumer base. When we're looking at a commercial district, it's very easy to think about trends, you know, what kind of businesses do we want to see, but it's important that we also understand consumers today and their patterns, because thinking about something like a retail business, the same retail business will have a different consumer in Hubbardston than it might in downtown Brooklyn. That's because it's gonna look different in size, capacity, spending type, and that oftentimes will dictate the success of a commercial district, and how we should shape it to be most successful. Tracy and I will be working in parallel to release her survey, and for me, we're doing business interviews throughout the summer months. I'm stepping this out as roughly a two-month process to, from July through August, to give additional time, so we're not just holding up business owners in their summertime as well. They'll be able to enjoy a little bit of time off while I'm still bugging them. But I'm confident that between those two exercises will be a great snapshot, and in the meantime, Tracy's also doing a review of existing conditions, existing rules and regulations, and doing business in Hubbardston.
Excellent.
I got a question for Alec. Did I hear you correcting that the interview is, that you're conducting are most of the businesses that are in the commercial district that we have right now?
So, it'll be your existing commercial districts, so you have a couple districts that allow for commercial use types. Effectively, anyone that's a business owner in Hubbardston would be liable to participate in here, unstated in my previous pitch there too. I'm also gonna be looking back at past records of denials that the town has issued for various business types, and sometimes speaking to the businesses that weren't able to get off the ground can give us good context as well.
The reason I'm bringing this up is because we do have, from what I know by traveling the roads here, is that there are some businesses that are not in our commercial district, and would be very interesting for us to understand and know why they are there from a location and history perspective, and potentially even the attractiveness of that particular location. If there is some potential that subsections that are currently residential might make better sense to also expand those to be commercial, because they have better synergies with the businesses that are there, as an example.
Yep, that's, that is good feedback. I think an important piece that comes out of this is you'll start to actually have a viable business inventory, more than just what's collected at a clerk's office when people come in to get a business certificate, but effectively mapping out where exactly your businesses are today, overlaying that with your existing zoning districts, and that alone can sometimes tell us what areas are most business today, and where it makes the most sense to expand districts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on that?
I was thinking about industrials.
About industrial?
Yeah.
So, we technically have an industrial zone.
Accidental, yeah.
It's fairly stable, but we don't actually have an industrial zone.
Yeah.
Pretty tough with no water and sewer.
Yeah, well, there's, there's also a related project that is going on, that's past the scope where we are here now, about possible overlays for the sandpit region of the town.
Yes, that's where I was thinking.
Yeah, because that may be a place where that's possible. So, I guess perceptually from a goal-setting standpoint, the board has looked at adjusting the sick hurricane as one project, and then anything related to the sandpit area as a separate project, because there's also different grant funding for that, so we have, we have a couple of grants to try to figure things out with the sandpits, and we have a good opportunity for even more grants as we go forward with it. Whereas for the, for the central kinda sickly hurricane area, we're pretty much on our own for that, other than the MRPC.
Accessibility to the highway, important for commuters, and to be clean, of course, we wouldn't be wanting to have sewer requirements.
Sure.
But maybe software development and other types of clean industries would be interesting.
Yeah.
I don't know, but it's, I'm new here, but I see only a small section of the town as industry, and it's in a very remote section of the town.
No, it, well, it's certainly a valid thought, but we have an engineering firm that's currently looking at what is pragmatic for that area, and we need the report back from them in terms of what's actually feasible, because they're looking at all of the factors, including like the changes in elevation that are required, what needs to go home here, the likelihood of it actually being able to connect to the neighboring sewer system.
Yeah.
There's a lot of unanswered questions that we can't figure out ourselves just sitting in a room, that they're hopefully gonna answer for us on.
Yeah.
Yeah, now that, that's a box we've talked about. Any other questions on it? All right, so moving down the agenda, is review outcome of the annual town meeting, every article passed?
Yay, congratulations.
Hey, congratulations.
Good job, Chairman.
After getting scummed at the last couple of meetings, it's good to finally move forward. So, with that, Alec, you said the Form sevens and such have already gone out?
I believe so, Leanne is the one submitting those. I prepared a cover letter to go into the Attorney General's office as well, but credit goes to Leanne for organizing, submitted those on behalf of the town.
Excellent, yeah.
They were submitted and affirmed that they were received, so.
Nice, yeah, I've been, I've been told a couple times that the cover letters are key, and that if they reach out to us, picking up the phone and responding. All right, so moving down the agenda, is there anything else you have on that, Alec?
Um, no, I'll just note, we highlight and emphasize your battery energy storage system and your A and U bylaw most predominantly. This board will remember that your definition of A and U varies slightly from the state's protected definition, and I did acknowledge to the state that if, if the thousand-square-foot threshold was not acceptable in their review, that you would accept revision of that back to nine hundred square feet, which is the state's definition, as opposed to then simply striking the bylaw.
Thank you.
All right, so moving down on the list is, we have C, which is the Berry Planning Board letter, which has been supplied to everybody on the board.
Yep.
And this letter appears to be a support letter requesting help with a couple of bills that have been filed at the State House. So, yeah, what is the board, well, I guess ultimately, is there a specific ask that's been communicated with this? Like, are they asking us to join with a similar letter, or are they looking for anything in particular, or did they just send us a copy of the letter? Open that will draw our own conclusions.
Looks like they want to support the filing of these bills.
So, this is certainly a challenging area, and we did recently pass a battery energy storage bylaw. There's been a lot of development at the state level, and a lot of that legislation has been fairly recent, so I don't, I vary, personally, I very much like the idea of having local approval for battery energy storage systems, and we all do too, because we all voted unanimously to support that, but also at the same time, the fact that all of this state regulation that's making all of this a problem is so very recent, I don't know what we could have for a realistic expectation of this. So, I guess I put that question up to you, Alec, on whether or not you think that this would be something meaningful us, meaningful for us to get involved in, in order to defend the bylaw we essentially just passed and currently have up on the table with the AG.
Yeah, I don't think that, so I think the board is well within its rights to participate in this if you see fit to do so, that being mailing to your local reps and senators, asking them to support specific bills. What I'll note is, we've already received feedback from our own legal counsel that effectively said, be prepared come July of twenty twenty-six, the Department of Environmental Resources has been told they need to create regulations for some of these permanent types. I think this is an attempt to get ahead of those and start helping to control the dialogue around that, when, when an executive office is required to prepare regulations, like we saw with A and U bylaw, that process is done through a dictated hearing and listening, et cetera, the schedule, but it is not always the most inclusive, whereas this exercise allows you to voice your opinion publicly and loudly amongst other towns, but ultimately how to participate in the exercise is up to the board's discretion. I don't think there's any risk to your existing proposed bylaw if you do choose to participate in this, but I note that our expectation is Department of Environmental Resources will be preparing their own regulations come July of twenty twenty-six.
All right, so I guess there's a question for the board on whether or not this is something we wanna put on our next agenda, if we wanna consider submitting a letter that is in line with our position, which is not necessarily the same as theirs, but someone might be there.
I don't know what these bills are, so I guess a minimum I'd have to read them.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm not suggesting we would wanna do something tonight.
Yeah, secondly, I always worry about preemption if the state's involved.
Yeah.
Does it, and move our own regulations, which we just adopted.
They, they want to, they absolutely want to.
Yeah.
It wasn't an accident that they just upped the statewide commitment to five gigawatts for battery energy storage by twenty thirty. Am I quoting the numbers right there?
I don't know them offhand, I certainly apologize.
Yeah, it was, it was like a certain number of megawatts, and then they just bumped it up to the gigawatt range, that they wanna build that much within Massachusetts, and I think it's actually part of the legislative mandate, so, yeah, I think a lot of this is gonna be preempted, and this is an opportunity to try to push back on what's coming to preempt the local regulations, because the most recent bill, I believe, takes anything over five hundred megawatts and completely takes it out of control. So, if it's over five hundred megawatts, no law can say what's ever, it just gets approved out of state law.
I, I, I happen to agree with you, I think we need to read the bills and get a better understanding as to what the, what they contain. The fact that they're stating that there's two hundred ninety-six lithium battery storage facilities, I mean, we don't even know what the capacity is of each one of those.
Yeah.
I don't even know if, and I, I guess I'm gonna have to read a little bit more about the Olcom project itself, and see whether or not they are truly all going to be lithium, lithium-based technologies. And I'm just gonna go on my soapbox here at this point in time, because this is actually hopefully seen by a larger portion of our public. I, I completely understand and agree that there are some very big concerns about the use of lithium. We live in a state where, in Somerville, Massachusetts, we have a company that is, is producing, and I'm not trying to endorse them, but I'm just simply stating a fact, Form Energy basically has a commercially viable product that is actually being manufactured in West Virginia, which is known as an iron battery, and they are extremely successful already, because they've sold megawatt, I'm sorry, yeah, megawatt facilities in different states, in different states, and they're supposed to be even cheaper than the lithium ones, and they're ideal just because of the fact that since they're stationary and not in a car, you can put an iron battery even with the weight on it in these facilities without really having to worry about impeding the, you know, how, what the range is of a car, because again, it's stationary. And I think that our legislators and our businesses ought to start looking at something like this here, allaying the fears that people have about lithium batteries, and be able to say, there's an alternative, and that alternative is one that does not have all of these safety issues that we are concerned about, and it's not a pipe dream, but it is actually, it's actually reality, and they really start, start looking at this here. So, I, I think that if anything, we need to potentially even have some discussions with our state legislators and see whether or not stationary battery energy storage systems can be controlled by technology, which I'm not sure if you can or cannot, I think there's regulations about this here, but I honestly believe that there are some real pragmatic solutions to this here, not only from a technology perspective, but also from a cost perspective, and it's a matter of exploring them, making them happen, and start allaying people's fears about lithium batteries.
Okay, so, I guess long story short, there is enough to put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
I think so, to bring some more information to the, to the meeting.
So, unless anybody else has anything burning, if they wanna get out on that, let's put it on the agenda.
Yep.
So, we already did the board organization, because it would have made the meeting pretty hard if we didn't.
Okay.
No problem.
Do we need to look at the committees that we are going to be assigned?
We do, but we need to get some guidance on where that's at with the select board, so let's do that next meeting. I don't think any of them between now and then. So, I have the angry, it's in the next two weeks. So, matter is not reasonably anticipated by chair. I don't have any anticipated everything. So, does anybody else have anything else, any members of the public online here to comment about anything not on the agenda or previously discussed? Anybody on the board have anything else? In that case, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to adjourn, sir.
And do we have a second?
No, sir.
And it is non-debatable, so I'm calling a vote.
It's our eye.
Who's eye?
Our eye.
And it is I, we are adjourned.